Good evening. This August the 5th, 2025. Board of Alderman Meeting is hereby called to order. I'd like to ask Alderman Gil Earhart if he'd lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Most gracious God and Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day that you've put upon us. We love you, Lord, and we thank you the way that you care for us and this city and our individuals here. Thank you, Lord, for your grace and your mercy. Lord, as the summer wraps up, school has started, and I would just ask that you would guide our children to have a yearning for learning, and that you'd be with our teachers and administrators, that they would care for our young people and grow them up and nurture them. Keep them safe, Lord, that they can enjoy school and get a good education. Lord, too, we've got a lot of change in politics. I just pray, Lord, that you would raise people up with wisdom. You'd give them the knowledge that you have ordained, and that we would be reminded that in Romans you said you have ordained all governments unto you and those who serve it. And, Lord, I just pray for wisdom tonight as we make decisions that guide our city through the budgets or the decisions we make that will keep our people safe and prosperous. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Just as a reminder for all of our participants tonight, these meetings are streamed live on the city's YouTube channel and also archived for playback. Just a reminder of that, and also for those of us with microphones, to have the microphone on green when we're speaking so that the audience can understand what we're saying and understand what's taking place. Ms. Stewart, would you conduct roll call?
Audridge. Collins. Dickerson. Earhart.
Here.
Gamage.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Wallace.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. All present. Obviously, a quorum is established. Board, do you have before you the July the 15th regular meeting minutes that were provided to you? Any questions, comments on the minutes, or motions to approve them?
A micro motion to approve.
Ms. Hamilton, motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Collins. Second, Mr. Collins. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approved as is. Following in our agenda, we have fortunate to have our First Regional Library Director Lori Barnes and friends of the library with us tonight. So I would like to get an update. I believe you would like to share an update with the board on status of the library and the great things going on in our busiest library, library in the region, correct?
You are absolutely correct. One of the busiest in the state, actually, Mayor. You know, it's just amazing what all that goes on. Such a blessing to the community here that we have in this library. I'm Lori Barnes, everyone. Good evening. It's great to see all of you. Great to be with you and talk about one of my favorite subjects, which is the library, of course. I have with me this evening Nancy Anderson, who is First Regional Library Business Manager. Nancy? And of course, Ms. Suzanne Argo, who you all know is our wonderful head librarian here in Olive Branch. And we have our amazing friends with us tonight. Friends, would you please stand back? First thing I want to do tonight is just begin by thanking you. We could not do all that we do without your support, and we thank you not only on behalf of our staff, we thank you on behalf of the patrons and the citizens of Olive Branch who use this library very, very religiously. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge some of the positive things that have happened at First Regional during the past year. We measured an even higher level of library usage as indicated by the number of items checked out and the number of visitors that we welcomed this past year. We provided even more library programs for all ages with increased attendance at these programs. We continued high levels of free meeting room usage for local nonprofit groups and citizens. And we added great success in the area of outreach services, which included taking library services out into the community to serve even more patrons. We upgraded and updated our technology, including computers and software for public use and print management systems. And last, we provided the continuation of the very popular Wi-Fi services 24/7 for those patrons who want to have access to the library, to Internet any time. We also passed out earlier one of these handouts that you have in front of you. The one, the side that says BJ Chain Public Library, I'd like to just go over some of these statistics so that you can see how we measure the statistics and what they are for the past year. We welcomed 96,863 visitors to the library, checked out 193, 695 items, had 473 total programs. 356 of those were for youth, were youth programs. Total program attendance, 21,568, and total youth program attendance, 17,996. I'd also like to bring to your attention that the pictures that we've included on this side are pictures that were made just this summer here at our summer reading program, which was a wild, wonderful time, let me tell you. It was such a great time. On the other side, these are some statistics regarding First Regional Library itself. Also, we have pictures and images from a 75th celebration that we had in Hernando back in the spring. First Regional Library is 75 years old this year. And so we're very proud of that tradition of library service that we're maintaining throughout all of these years, okay? And I also want to tell you, just a tidbit, sometimes you might hear someone mention or mentions or say that the Internet's going to take the place of the public library. We're here tonight to tell you that that is just not the case, and we have the statistics to prove it. So we're very proud of First Regional and proud of your part in making it a success. At this time, I want to turn it over to Suzanne Argo, who's going to give you an update on the library.
We have had a very exciting summer reading program this year. The theme of it was add a little color to your world at the library. And we added lots of colorful fun for people of all ages this summer by offering 92 programs for infants, preschoolers, grade schoolers, teenagers, and adults with a total attendance of 5,502. And that's just for the months of June and July. One of our favorite new programs we had this year for our children was Magic Mr. Nick's Foam Party on June the 17th. Mr. Nick sprayed masses of massive amounts of white fluffy foam around our front parking lot and let the 60 children and adults have a wonderful time running around in it. Even when it started raining, it didn't matter. They were still out there in all the foam. Another one of our outstanding programs this year was the Puzzle Palooza Contest for Adults on the 21st of July. We had a Christmas in July theme, so all 16 participants came in Christmas attire attire to compete using Christmas puzzles. The teams of four had 90 minutes to complete a 500-piece puzzle. The winners all got $10 worth of Kroger gift cards, which is really good this time with groceries so expensive. It was such a success that we are planning a beach-themed puzzle competition in December. We have already started planning programs for the coming months that we are very excited about. First of all, up on Wednesday, August the 27th, we had invited our mayor, Ken Adams, to speak at our box luncheon about all the great things that are happening in Olive Branch. And you will get a free box lunch, okay? From Panera, so they're good. We are also hosting a First Regional Library 75th Anniversary Celebration on Saturday, September 20th. From 11 to 2 o'clock, we'll have food trucks, a dinosaur program, and these are big dinosaurs that are in this program for kids, crass for adults and children, the balloon lady, and more. I'd like everyone personally to invite each one of you to come and share the fun. We realize that we are unable to provide any of these programs or services we offer without your continuing support. The 11 members of my staff and I sincerely thank you for all you do for both our city and our library throughout the year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne, so very much. As Suzanne said, we've got wonderful things that we've done recently, and we have wonderful programs and activities that are coming. So, good job Suzanne and her staff. They do amazing work. As I close, let me just end by stating how much we appreciate the funds that we have received from the City of Olive Branch. For fiscal year 2026, we are requesting level funding in the amount of $432,600. This will assure that the Olive Branch Public Library can maintain the current number of service hours and programming. So let me close by thanking you once again for considering this request. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes, and also Ms. Argo, and staff members and friends of the library. Thank you for all you guys do, and men and women do. We thank you so much. Any other comments, Board?
I would personally like to thank the friends of the library and all that you do. It means a lot to not just our young people, but to our adults as well. And some of the interaction that we're receiving, too, with maybe some Wesson House events and things at City Hall. So, thank you all.
Absolutely. Couldn't do without our friends. They're amazing. Thank you so much. Y'all have a wonderful evening, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day. Board, you have six-page mayor's update, operational report this particular meeting, and I'm going to leave that as is, and we're not going to cover those six pages. But if you have any questions about items our various departments and team members are doing, feel free to reach out, and I'll provide you an update. But special thanks to all the departments that make this happen month in and month out. Next item's our consent agenda. Board, any questions or comments on the consent agenda, items 1 through 39? I know we're all pleased. I won't belabor item 24, but the traffic signalization working at College and Craft before school started, that was a big push by engineering and several staff members, as well as contractors and Civil Link, and I'm leaving someone else out, I'm sure, but Lewis Electric, I believe. But we double timed and got that light up and working before school traffic began, and that was a commitment we had made. So, special thanks, Andy and team, for making that happen. If there are no other comments, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 39? Mr. Gamage, motion?
Second.
Mr. Wallace? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda approved. Consent agenda approved. Item number one, this is our Planning Commission New Business Hearing Date for Consideration and Action on a Motion Declaring the Condition of the Following Properties to be Administ to Public Health and Safety and Directing Either the City Staff or Contract Labor to Clean the Property Forthwith. So the ones in green, Mr. Gambon, have been addressed. Is that correct? And the ones in yellow are partially addressed, but still may need action. Is that right?
Yes, sir. So the way, just to remind the board of how this works, is we have to advertise for this public hearing 15 days in advance. So oftentimes, we run the ad back in middle part of July for tonight's meeting. And by the time we send the memo out to you to prepare you for the agenda packet, it would be last Wednesday, which would have been July 30th. So as of July 30th, we go out and check all those properties that were on the list, and the ones that are there, the nine that you see in green, were already cut at that point. But they had been advertised for tonight's public hearing, but the ones on the top on list A were already cut. So what I'll do is go through list B. Those were the ones as of Wednesday when the memo went out that still weren't complete. Now, since that time, we have had some changes, and that's what I'll report on tonight. So the first one is the Lee property located at 6750 Curtis Cove. And you can see some of the pictures that we had, some problem with, wasn't really high grass or anything. This was just basically accumulation of some junk and debris. So as of today, there's been substantial cleanup on the property. It's not 100% completed, but what staff would advise tonight is that the board not take any type of action. And if, for whatever reason, the cleanup does not progress or continue, what staff would do is bring forward a case to municipal court on this property, because it's been cleaned up to the point now where it really wouldn't make sense to bring in any type of contract labor because the job's not big enough for them to necessarily do. So that's the recommendation with Curtis Cove. This is the Summers property, Lot 14 Somerset View. This is Pleasant Hill Road and Highway 302. This has not been addressed as of tonight. This is 6285 Acre Lane, the Wright property. And this one, you can see the pictures that were taken on July 29th when your memo went out. And as of today, you can see that the property has been cleaned up, so no action is required on that one. This is the Royster property at 6698 Hamilton Circle. This property has not been addressed as of tonight's meeting, so that's the second one that will remain on the list. This is 4535 Dupre Drive. This one also has been cut as of today, so that's been cleaned up fine, so no action will be needed on that one. And this shows you the revised list B. We had a last property that, this was 5837 Ross Road, and I didn't show you a picture of that. It was not cleaned at the time the advertisement went out or the notification of the public hearing. But what happened is between the time of the public hearing and the time our memo went out, the property changed hands. So we had a different owner. So basically, that new owner fortunately has since cut the property. So this one's actually a little bit different. This will appear on your list A for next time, because it's already been cleaned. But, and I'll show you a picture of that with your packet next time. But to summarize, we only have two properties that are highlighted here in yellow that would still be possibly declared as a nuisance by the alderman and directing us to hire contract labor to clean those two up.
Thank you, Mr. Gambon. Is there anyone here that is the property owner or is associated with these two properties, the ones in yellow? Is that correct? Jason?
Yes, sir.
So that would be the Donna Summers, Lot 14 Somerset View, second edition, or Eugene and Sherry Royster, Royster, Hamilton Circle South, 6698. Anyone here associated with these properties or wish to give comments on these two properties? So your request, Jason, is for a motion on the two items in yellow?
Yes, sir.
So moved, Mr. Mayor?
Motion.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
The representatives from Parkview were here. Do you understand that property's being pruned now, or did you have a question about that?
It has been cut, is that right, Mr. Gambon?
Yes, sir. It was on the list day. It had been cleaned by the time our memo went out. I did go out and personally take a look at it. It's not manicured, but it has definitely been mowed.
Okay. On behalf of Parkwood, any questions? Parkview, excuse me. Any questions? Come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Adams, I think you recognize me. We've met before. I was privileged to be in your office and have a discussion last year. John Maxson was our president then, and he is recently retired. My name is Janice Phillips. I am the current president for the Oaks at Parkview. We share the adjacent property with Midland MCA OBLLC. I reached out to the owner, Trey Hart, beginning in July. July 11th was the first correspondence that we had that he needed to attend to his lot. Made him aware that the grass was an issue. We could not see past our street, that it was inhibiting to seeing to be able to pull out safely. He informed me that the property would be done. It didn't. I next reached out to him on July the 11th. Again, we discussed it. He said the property would be upkeep. Still didn't get a response. So again, I called him on the 23rd. He said they had had some issues, which I do understand. There was things sometimes we don't all have control over, but he was trying to get on it. They had a tractor problem. They came out, they started cutting. Well, right away after that cut, they must have had some kind of issue. They stopped. And we started getting rodents in our neighborhood. I had to call animal control trappers to come out and start trapping our neighborhood. I brought plenty of pictures of what it looks like today, and I understand the city is not concerned, but I am. And my neighbors that live on that side don't have a pretty sight to look at. We take a lot of pride in our community over there. We keep ourselves very groomed. We want to be part of the City of Olive Branch that people want to come to because we maintain our property very well to be a representative of what the city has to offer. So I'd be glad to share those with you. The other side of this project or problem with this property is there is some drainage issues. And where they are not cutting the grass is where the drainage problem is. The retention pond that lays behind our fence line, we have a little unwanted resident there, which I'm sure you all know about, Mr. Beaver. He has clogged it up again. I brought pictures of that for you. And that's about where most of these animals are coming from, some from that land and some from the park. Now, I know we have to learn to live with nature, but they're tearing up our property. So we chose to hire someone to come in and start trapping. Where they don't mow, there is a drainage system that is damaged. And when it rains, that water flows into our street, which floods. Then I have to call the city and have them open up our drain because it's overflowing like a fountain to get it to relieve it somehow, but it has nowhere to go because it's breached underneath their land. So I would like to know, is that their responsibility or the city's responsibility to fix that drainage issue? I brought pictures to share from today, and the other issues on that land that I feel, they can't understand that the structure of that property is collapsed, the original infrastructure. And that's the portion where it's not being mowed, and that's what my people have to look at. So I want to thank everyone for letting me speak today. And on the behalf of the Oaks at Parkview community, I want to thank you all for your service. Mayor Adams has been awesome to our community, worked with us. Our alderman, David Wallace, he always answers his phone, no matter what time it is, to answer my questions. So, and I want to thank the rest of you for your service to our city. We really love our town, and we're going to do our part to keep it beautiful. On behalf of that, I hope you'll consider our thoughts on this piece of property.
Ms. Phillips, we would like to see the pictures, Ms. Phillips, if you'd pass them around. And I know the property very well, and I'm going to put public works somewhat and COO Riker on the spot. That water, not leak, but the natural water flow that was coming from the other side, which was our city park, was that not addressed? And I don't, so it's not going into the street anymore, is that right?
There was a drainage, there was a drainage pipe down the south east side.
Yes, sir.
Also, there's some drainage outlets behind the pond that Booker sent me pictures today that they were cleaned out.
Problems.
Where the retention pond is, and I saw that that had been cleaned, I just picture that. Where it's clogged up completely, and where it has been completely breached that is under there. That's not made completely cleaned out. So what happens is it's one of my fence lines, and we did clear rocks as part of the legislative process. Hazardous things over the road. But what happens is it's Midland land, and it just hurts because that is breached completely on that side. So we wanted it so much. It just starts flooding over, all the way over the sidewalk into our street. I go out there and I could say it comes out because I mean, it's two or three inches of rain when it's one of those big heavy rains.
See a nod from? See a head nod from Mr. Rose as well. If y'all follow back up on that. I know you've done some work. I know you put a lot of new riprap down and making sure that pipe and that water flows as it's supposed to to the other side of the street. But let's look at that again. And, Mr. Gambon, I know they cut the property, but also know that it is still tall in some areas. And I think we can make a courtesy request. A weed eater and a little bit of labor would probably finish it up. I know when people cut with a bush hog, it tears. It doesn't manicure. It's not level, but same time, some of those weeds appear to be about knee-high if I'm looking at them right. And maybe that landowner would be a good neighbor and at least take care of those weeds with a weed whacker or weed eater in addition to bush hogging it.
Yes, sir. This has been, this property, there were, I think, two mowing seasons where the city actually maintained this property through this process. And I think after speaking with the hearts about it prior to the beginning of this season, you know, I pointed out to them how much they had paid the city in terms of our contractors doing this, plus the penalties that the board have imposed. And I'm like, you know, told them, basically, you could do this work at a fraction of the cost that the city's doing it. And since that time, they've been out mowing it. But I do agree, it's not well manicured. It's really under the board's purview. If you would like to declare it to be a nuisance or a menace, we could certainly get contract labor out to do a better job than they've done. If you all want to do that, that's up to the board.
That may be a possibility. And just so the public knows, when we say That may be a possibility, and just so the public knows, when we say we're cutting it, we're cutting it, and we're attaching a lean to it, we're not just out cutting grass of some private lot. But since we already had a motion from Alderman Dickerson.
Can we, I'll amend that, is can we declare these two as a menace, and put the one on Parkview back for the next meeting and give the chance for them to cut it, and just add that back to the meeting for the nineteenth, for whenever that is?
Yes, sir.
And then give them two weeks to go out there and try to finish up the weed eating that they did.
Yes, sir. So the motion is to, to keep the, to turn the Somerset View and the Hamilton Circle South over for immediate addressing by the city staff or contract labor, and to put the, the two that are on Parkview Boulevard, sixty-seven fifty-five and eighty-five, back on the agenda a month out to see if they've cleaned it, maintained it. Is there a second on that?
Table it, we'll table it for a month, that'll give them plenty of time to get it done.
Table that for one month out. That would be the date of?
The first meeting in September.
September the second, and we'll revisit that one, so that's a motion. Is there a second on Mr. Dickerson's motion?
Second.
Second. Mr. Wallace, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Alderman Earhart, would you like these back as well, Ms. Phillips? Thank you. I'm pleased to hear that we cut a lot better than a contractor, cut it smoother, so we'll work with you to get it in the right condition. Absolutely. Thank you for letting us know. All right, so we covered that and table for a month out, first meeting in September. Following the agenda, old business item, this is consideration of bids opened on July the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, for apron rehabilitation at our airport. And I believe that this is being asked to be tabled at this particular time to look at this bid opening a little closer. Mr. Wallace, motion to table to the nineteenth. Second, Ms. Aldridge. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Second item is consideration of bids opened July the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, for the gas regulator station at Center Hill Road and Mississippi Highway one seventy-eight. This was a rebid situation. Mr. Swims, anything other than ready to go forward with this particular item?
We just want to carry this over to the next meeting, August nineteenth.
Ask to be tabled to the nineteenth to look over the bids and make sure they're in order?
Yes, sir.
Board's very aware, it's not just what's the lowest bid, it's do the contractors have the license required, and do they meet the time requirements? There's a, a full agenda other than just who's got the best number. So was there a motion to table it to the nineteenth of August as well?
Motion, please.
Collins, motion. Wallace, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business, consideration of recommendation to approve change order number five on the contract with A and B Construction Company Incorporated in the additive amount of six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-one cents, increasing the contract amount from eight million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-seven cents to eight million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, and extending the contract time by thirty-nine days, making the new project completion date March the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, for the project referred to as Olive Branch Public Works Building. Mr. Swims?
I don't have anything additional to that, but it's just to add gravel to it and to extend the, the construction time for thirty-nine days, so we recommend that to the Board.
It's moving, visually looking at it, it's moving pretty quick, but is this?
I think they're doing a good job.
Is this due to rain delays?
Some issues coming up, but they're moving ahead.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to support that recommendation, too.
Earhart, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item two, consideration to approve change order number one on the contract with Grinder Taber and Grinder Incorporated in the additive amount of three thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents, increasing the contract amount from four million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and fifty-six cents to four million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars and forty-three cents, and extending the contract time by twelve days, twelve calendar days, making the new project completion date December the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, for the George Harrison Soccer Complex Phase Two. This is basically more sand needed on the site, is that?
We did, we had a, a kind of an unforeseen issue out there, and so this additional sand was required part of the contract, so we do recommend that and the, to extend the substantial completion date by twelve days.
Thank you, Mr. Swims. Any questions, Board, on, on this? Or motions? Motion to approve by Mr. Gammage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickerson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number three, consideration of recommendation to approve change order number four on contract with Lehman Roberts in the deductive amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars and fifty cents, decreasing the contract amount from two million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand and four dollars to two million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and three dollars and fifty cents for the project referred to as annual surface treatments. Mr. Swims?
Actually, this one, number, item number three, kind of ties to item number four, which is the next item. We're basically taking a fog seal off of Malone Road from Church Road South going to Robinson Crossing, that's actually the name where, of the road where, where it deadends, and we're putting a micro seal down, and that's the request. Now that we've looked at it, we've determined that that was probably the better approach to take for that road, so we're recommending to, for, for this particular item to remove that from the Lehman Roberts contract.
And, and these are the streets and roads that the Board approved about a month ago for, to be addressed with this fiscal year, so first week of September, I guess, is the target date to have them complete? Is that a fair talk? For all the streets that the Board approved? I sent them the list that you and Mr. Riker sent me today to show the ones that are already addressed, but the ones they approved for this fiscal year, these are part of that, correct?
For, no, this right here is, is a part of the Lehman Roberts contract for the, the overlays. Are you talking about the, are you talking about the patching project?
Two different things. Is that two different things? I was talking about the master list of about thirty streets. This wasn't on there?
No.
Okay, my bad.
No, that wasn't part of that.
So this is, as you said, the fog seal being changed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, Board, on, on this? Any motions?
Motion to approve the change.
Mr. Collins, motion to approve the change. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item four, and you said ties in with three as well, change order number one on contract with Vance Brothers in the additive amount of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents, increasing the contract amount from one million, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three fifty to one million, eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents for the project referred to as Preservation Treatments Project, and that's the one I was speaking of, I believe.
Right.
What changes on this, Mr. Swims?
The, just like I said, that this is going to be a micro seal that's gonna go on that road, and that's, that's adding this to the contract for Vance Brothers, so we do recommend that change.
Questions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Hamilton, motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Earhart. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to leave regular session with intention of going into executive session to discuss items one through seven? Collins, motion. Wallace, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter in the gas maintenance department, personnel matter in the planning and development department, personnel matter in the police department, personnel matter in the water billing department, personnel matter in the wa, water maintenance department, personnel matter in the fire department, and discussion with city attorney regarding Mississippi Code Annotated twenty-five, fourteen, seven, four J. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss those seven items?
So moved.
Mr. Earhart, motion. Second, Mr. Gammage. All in favor? All opposed? We are in executive session.